It's five o'clock. We call the November 27, 2018, Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. A roll call will show that all commissioners are present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our first item is the Public Access Forum. Is there anyone here to speak about things that are not on today's agenda? Is there anyone here for things that are not on today's agenda? Please approach a microphone. Issues that are not found on today's agenda, speakers may comment for three to four minutes. Total allotted time for this forum is 10 minutes. A citizen may speak at the Public Access Forum once per month.
Okay, thank you. I'm Cindy...
Please give your name and address.
Yes, I'm Cindy Stelton, 31 Cherry Street, South Kimball, Minnesota, and I'm a licensed daycare here in Stearns County. I wanted to address you today, and I also have Kelly Martini with me who would like to address you. We have packets for you up there. We just wanted to come to you with hopefully your support and goodwill as far as daycares in this state. Here in Stearns County, you know that we've had a drop of daycares from 687 approximately in 2008 to 384 currently, and in the state, there's been a drop of 11,867 down to 7,000 and some. I have personally been at the legislation and the stakeholder meetings that were held around the state a few years ago, and I wanted to address the fact that I met with senators, the deputy inspector general of licensing, which was Reggie Waggoner. And last spring, we had a meeting here in Stearns County, which was very well attended. We had a lot of questions and a lot of concern about what's going on with daycares in Minnesota and the rapid drop of daycares in our state and county. And then I recently talked before the November 1st meeting that we had here in Stearns County, which was a stakeholder meeting for the new fingerprinting and all of that that's going to go on with new rules for daycare. I had a little talk with Paul Weineman before that meeting, and he mentioned that he would like to see an increase in the daycare numbers as far as that goes because of variances being something that the county doesn't really like to deal with. And he was really for that. He felt that that was a good move and that maybe you as commissioners could support us as far as going to legislators and senators to address that issue. I also talked to Ms. Melissa Huberty and Brenda Mahoney. I had a very nice talk with her, and I was very pleased to see that she is looking to have collaboration in this area, and she's very willing to work with us. And to see that we have had in the past, we haven't had very good collaboration, but she would like to see us, you know, getting together and possibly having meetings for, you know, what's going on and with the new support that we need as far as, you know, so many closing. We are simply here to ask you if you could see some huge and immediate changes in childcare here in Stearns County that you would possibly look at, at the fact that we really feel that the variance issue is a big issue, and possibly to look at that as being something that we could approach and look at. It was changed in January of this year to take away the two-part rule of it. We only are allowed one part of it to be over now, and that really affects us greatly here in Stearns County because of the separation of children. We have infants that sometimes have to be placed in another daycare. We have siblings that are separated, and sometimes we have long distances and costs that are very greatly affecting us as daycares, but also parents and taxpayers. So I really want you to please support us in this whole venue. And as far as the other thing that I think is a very big challenge for us is there still is quite a bit of consistency and knowledge that is not present when the licensors come out, and I would like to see that improve and get better. We also feel that the drop in licensing every year has been kind of a problem for us because many times we're running our daycare and we have 10 to 12 children. That's the average daycare. And when they come, they drop in, so we could have them dropping in at lunch, which I don't think happens a lot, but they drop in, and then they're there for one and a half to two and a half hours. And they tell us that we should find something for those little 10 children to do during that time, and I don't think that's acceptable. My job is to watch the children, and my job is to take care of those children. And when I feel that, you know, they're coming in and they're looking at all of your home and they're going around your home, you need to be with them. You also need to be present as far as all the rules and regulations. And so when other counties are having 15 to 20-minute visits, our visits are sometimes two to two and a half hours. I just think that is not acceptable. And I would like to see that change. I would like to see that possibly you would support that and have maybe the off-year, we could have an appointment, and the on-year, we could have a drop-in, but to make it a shorter visit when we have the children present because we used to be able to close on our licensing day. So those are some of the things that I wanted to bring up to you today. Kelly has a few comments, and then we'll leave you be to your truth and taxation meeting, but thank you for listening to us, and thank you for your support. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hello. Kelly Martini, Avon, 13994 Norway Road, Avon. Thank you for letting us talk and to speak up about childcare that is needed. I've been doing childcare for about 20 years, so I'm glad. I'm going to try and explain two important things in just a couple minutes. First, it's the lack of childcare, both in home and centers in our area. As you've seen or heard, the closings of Little Saints Daycare. And these are the brochure or the packet that I'm kind of going to go through with you real quick. They provided about 80 families, only giving them a two-day notice, just to let you know. That's what I read in the article that I have printed out for you. The next handout is the number of family childcare in our area. I've been doing data and throughout the state of Minnesota. The numbers have been dropping, but most important in our area is Stearns County. We, home family childcare providers, keep the families working and supporting our economy. Without us, families couldn't work. February 2018, there was 9,563 licensed providers. Today, there's 8,645. 918 providers closed their doors. This is all within a year. So if you look at Stearns County, in February, there was 424. Today, there's only 388 with 36 providers closing their doors within a year. These are all children losing care in our area that is much needed. Second is our profession. We have many rules and regulations that change yearly. When I started, we only needed eight hours of training, and today it's doubled. Now we need 16. There's a training sheet here that you guys can look at. Inspections in families have gotten more technical in the years, and inspections and rules have increased. The families have gotten pickier on how much we want to, on what they want us to do looking after their children. If the parents don't like what we do, they call in on us, and usually the county favors with what the parent claims we've done. I've personally been called in. A parent claimed that I don't spend enough outside time with their children. This was during the summer months. Weather permitting, we go outside after nap and snack time, which is 3:30 till pickup time, 5:00, 5:30. I did call my licenser about this particular parent prior to her calling in, so my licenser had a heads-up. But it's simple complaints that can get us turned into a big ordeal and could close a business because they don't like what we do. I am here telling you all that we need communication back with licensors and providers. 20 years ago, we could call our licenser over a simple question, and with the rules brought down on us, if we call something like going out, talking to our licenser about going outside during the winter months, we've had licensors say, "If we don't see footprints in the snow, we'll write you up." Try getting eight kids under the age of five dressed with two infants to go outside. You can only imagine. I've included training requirements for licensed family childcare providers for you to look at. Not only do we need a recommended 16 hours a year, but we're limited to training that we need. I've been in business for 20 years, and to have to listen to sudden unexpected infant death and abusive head trauma every year is like listening to a broken record. I do believe that the training we need is, do is much needed, but DHS needs to figure something better for us. I've also included the license capacity breakdown for you all because we are limited to the ages and numbers of children we have in our homes and centers. The Department of Human Services licensing checklist is for us providers to fill out prior to becoming a provider, and every time we renew our license every two years. The Family System Licensing Checklist is what licensors have in hand when they come to inspect to make sure we're in compliance. This is a 39-page document, and I counted 405 questions. This is what intimidates new providers. Years ago, the county would have orientation for people to become providers. They would have the providers there for people to ask questions. The county will do orientations in the evening and weekends. From my understanding, that is no longer being done. I would recommend this to be done again. I am the president of our local daycare association, SBCCA, Stearns Benton Child Care Association, and we could work with the county and give them providers that are willing to offer their free time to help out. SBCCA currently has 75 members, and you can see with the last graph, other than supporting new providers of what SBCCA does for their members, parents email the association what they are looking for, and we pass it along to our members. Childcare Aware used to have the referral agency and would let parents know which providers had openings. That is no longer available, and SBCCA is trying their best to help families and to find childcare in our communities and help the providers filling their spots. The state needs providers. The state needs help to get people to enjoy their jobs and help working people, help working people out in their communities. Wouldn't it be great to have Stearns County be the county to start working with providers and making the business grow? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yep.
Do we do anything here as far as...
I guess my suggestion, right, just refer to human services, and they will work with the daycare providers and come back to the board.
Can we do that, Melissa?
I see Melissa's nodding her head, so.
Is there anyone else here for the Public Access Forum? Anyone else for Public Access? Seeing no one for Public Access, we're going to move on to Consent. To the Consent Agenda, we do have one addition. Plus, Angie Berg would like to give us an update on one of the items on the Consent Agenda.
Good evening, commissioners. Angie Berg. A short while ago, I was, received a phone call from Mr. San Calvert, an attorney who is in the room, related to item number B7 on packet page 54. This is on your Consent Agenda. This item was unanimously recommended to be approved by the Planning Commission at their hearing on November 15. And Mr. Calvert's request to me was to relay to the board that he would like to have this item pulled from Consent for discussion purposes, and that would be up to the board. Board's discretion, not a typical request this late in the game, but this would be a decision for the board.
Do we have any comments? Commissioner Merrick?
No, I was going to move the Consent Agenda with three, four additional items unless you want discussion on this issue.
Does anybody wish to do a discussion on that issue?
Sounds like wisdom to me.
Okay, well, I'm going to move the Consent Agenda, and we have four additional items. B9 is approve a contract of police services with the city of Kimball. B10 is approve MCIT sponsorship. That's number... B11 is approve a price change to the tax forfeit of property parcel number 70.38756-0000 located in the city of Painesville from $14,000 to $1,000. And then B12 is to approve the appointment of Division Director of Human Services, Finance and Technology Division.
Is there a second?
I'll second with a comment or a question.
Okay. Commissioner Pruski?
On item number three, with our legislative priorities, I'm just going to mention that, you know, we have the Association Minnesota Counties coming up, that meeting. I think when we have dialogue there, perhaps maybe some of those priorities could change, and we may be able to add something in addition perhaps to those priorities for discussion and what I understand. So it's not a document written in hard ink or dry ink, so that, you know, there could be some changes perhaps after that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just respond to that, and I did have one suggestion from Commissioner Mergan about that, and, you know, perhaps even be something that it might change because of the presentation you just heard, and the AMC conference as well. We will not meet with our legislators after our next board meeting, so we could hold off on this if you wanted to wait, and then I would put it on your agenda for December 11th and have it ready for distribution to our delegation on the 12th, if you felt that we should do that. Just an option.
Anybody have any comments?
The only additional comment that I always make that, and I don't know how long we've been doing this, but for quite some time, and whatever issues on the list of priorities, it was important to some commissioner or to some board in the state of Minnesota at some point, so it stays on there. When it's served on the AMC board, they would never take one and throw it away completely, but they will prioritize. So if there's a top two, top three, top five, you know, with the AMC conference, they will develop probably the top five or so. But that doesn't mean that the rest go away, and AMC staff will tell you that. It's important that they see the list, so if that conversation comes up during the legislative session, they've got something to go back on. So just because it's not on this list, it may be on last year's list, and it continues to be on the list, but not the priority. What you can do is, as Mr. Williams says, or whatever, but I just wanted to clarify that.
What are the wishes?
I'd like the suggestion, let's hold off, let's remove it, and put it on the next meeting after. That would be after our AMC conference.
Is this anything that would be at the conference next Sunday through Tuesday?
Well, they will be developing, if it's like in past years, they will be developing a list of priorities. They will have something that came through the policy committees, from the different policy committees, and the AMC board, working with AMC staff, will have a vote and pick three, the five, six, seven of the priorities from everything submitted, from all eight to seven counties and from policy committees.
So seeing this really isn't going to affect what happens there?
No. Well, I don't think so.
Okay. Then I wouldn't see a problem pulling it either.
Yeah, this is the document that we will use when we meet with our legislature, delegation on December 12. That's really what this document is mostly for. And then during the session, we use it at that time, too.
Right. So who made the motion?
Do you make the motion?
I did.
With pulling that part?
Sure. I'm fine with that.
Second? Okay. All right. Everybody okay?
And then maybe just a point of clarification. I think on the Painesville property was 15,000 to 1,000, right?
Right. Isn't that what I said?
I think you said 14 to 1,000. Okay, 15 to 1, yeah. Okay.
Anything else? Otherwise, seeing nothing? All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are up to item C, Public Works, with Jody Tyke here. Good evening.
I have three resolutions for you today, and they start on Agenda Packet, page 117. These are the required resolutions for submitting federal applications in Region 7W. The three projects Stearns County plans to submit for federal funding. Our county stated Highway 13 resurfacing from CASA 17 to the North County Line, CASA 54 resurfacing from the east limits of Albany to CASA 9 in Avon, and County Road 40, 145, excuse me, turn lanes at 196th Street and Hubble Road that's near an industrial park in Linden Township. All these projects are included in the five-year road improvement program, so I'm asking the board to adopt those resolutions certifying that the local match is available.
What are the wishes?
I'll move adoption of the three resolutions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion. All in favor, signify with aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I have no miscellaneous unless the board has something for me.
Anyone? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
We are item D, Environmental Services. We have Angie Berg and Shelley Benson here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, board members. Angie Berg is here. We will go through the first item, and then Mark Lateral will be here for the second item.
Good evening. Starting on packet page 125, we have a Planning Commission action on a rezoning submitted by John and Vicky Binsfield of Eden Valley. The recommended board action is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial, and if you concur, would be to adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact. If the board does not concur with the Planning Commission and their findings of fact, it has been your practice to schedule your own public hearing at a future date, which could be held on December 18. The Planning Commission held this hearing on November 15, and the rezoning is for approximately two acres from the R10 zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The property is Lot 3, Block 1, Eden View Acres Platte 2, located in Section 24 of Eden Lake Township. As noted in the packet, the Planning Commission voted on a three-to-two vote to recommend denial. Two members were, had excused absences for that meeting, so there was only five members present. And the Planning Commission established the following findings of fact. The proposal does not conform to the Stearns County comprehensive plan, specifically Goal 3, objectives 1 and 2, by managing the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character, and discouraging incompatible land uses through effective land use controls. Objective 2 is identifying appropriate areas for commercial, industrial, and non-farm rural residential developments. The Planning Commission found that the proposal would impact the rural character of the neighborhood, of the area, excuse me. Environmental concerns would be addressed through the permitting process. There would be a minimal increase in traffic as a result of the proposal. The proposal would have no impact to existing public services and facilities. The proposal is considered spot zoning, as there is no other commercial zoning in the area. And lastly, the Planning Commission noted that Eden Lake Township recommended approval of the request. And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, there was a public member at the public hearing opposed to the request. He was the neighbor directly to the west. And then in your packet, page 147, there was a written testimony submitted by Nick and Doris Thielen in support of the request. That's all I have. And the applicants are here.
Okay. Do we, what would we like to do? John Binsfield did call me, and according to him, there were some, he was given some conflicting information on things. One group told him that he should, in order to get the permit, should switch it to commercial, and then the next group told him, well, if it wasn't commercial, they would give him the permit. So should we set a public hearing, or should we hear from Mr. Binsfield now?
You can hear from Mr. Binsfield, but ordinarily, when we don't concur with the Planning Commission, we set a public hearing. So it's up to you, whatever you want to do. Otherwise, I'm ready to make a motion to set a public hearing.
Okay. Will you consider that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to set a public hearing. That's been past practice of the board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of setting a public hearing for this, signify with aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So who will be having a public hearing?
Yes, December 18.
December 18 will be the public hearing. That will be a nine. Time to be determined.
Right, Mr. Chair, we'll send notice to the neighbors and the newspapers and work with administration on that time.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item we have is a returning item. We talked about this in September, and we talked about the solid waste, the environmental service fee, and you asked for some additional information. We created a spreadsheet, put some information together, and Mark Lateral is here to present this item.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, as Shelley indicated, the Environmental Services initiated the conversation with the board at the September 18 meeting. As she stated, there was a request for further information, and we've provided that to you. A little background, the environmental service fee is an assessed flat rate fee to each household in the county, and a percentage rate to the non-residential customers collected by their waste hauler. The expenditure of these funds can only be utilized for solid waste management services, which includes recycling and waste reduction services, collection, processing, and disposal of solid waste, closure and post-closure care of solid waste facilities, and response to releases from a solid waste facility or a closed facility. As shown on the spreadsheet, to date, the greatest expenditure of these funds was the construction of the HHW, the Household Hazardous Waste Facility, at a cost of $4.3 million. The greatest reoccurring cost is the expense is salaries and benefits, which in 2016... The greatest reoccurring cost is the expense is salaries and benefits, which in 2017 comprised 67% of the overall expenditures, and utilized 28% of the collected environmental service fee funds. Up until 2017, the subsidy to the Tri-County Solid Waste Commission was the second largest in regular expenditure, however, that expenditure has been reduced since Tri-County staff is now part of the Environmental Services Department, and along, in Benton and Sherman Counties cover their proportion of costs of the Tri-County Solid Waste Commission fees. Environmental Services would like to suggest that the long-term waste programming be explored after the generation of the Tri-County Solid Waste Strategic Plan, and the County Solid Waste Plan updates are completed, however, there are some future remedial considerations for the programs, such as the creation of a new fluorescent bulb mobile collection geared towards aiding the Western Sterns County residents, subsidy for egg plastic recycling, and the creation of a Sharps program at our facility. So with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you for discussion as to the wishes of the board.
Mr. Merrick.
You know, the, the issue of egg plastics has come up several times, both at the Tri-County Solid Waste Commission and at a dairy advisory, and I think Tim Oswald from your department is working with farmers out in that area on the egg plastics issue, so I'm not sure how it all fits together, but it would seem appropriate to, to at least have the public hearing maybe at the latest time on December 18th, and see what kind of input we get from the Dairy Advisory Committee, from what Tim Oswald from your department comes up with, would seem to be the appropriate thing to do, to get that information, and, and see how we can tie everything together.
So setting a public hearing for all of the environmental fees?
Right, for everything. Is that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, yes. Tim Oswald is putting together information, he is our Tri-County Coordinator, so he's putting some survey questions together for the public, so we get a, a better handle on kind of the, the magnitude of the issue. What we're finding is the information provided by Revolution Plastics wasn't very accurate, and we'd like to know what that number is before we assume any, you know, how we want to spend environmental service fee dollars toward that. I think Dairy Advisory was very supportive of coming up with a program, so in conjunction with those people in Minnesota Milk, we all want to work together in the Tri-County area to support the egg plastics. We just don't know the scope of it until we get the, some of that survey data back. We, hopefully, if you hold it on the 18th, we will have some of that. We're asking for the questionnaire to come back by the December 14th.
Yes, we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for December 18th, in, in hopes that we have that information that you're talking about.
So, and that is for review of all the environmental fees?
It would, it would only be the solid waste service fee.
Right, what's, what's on our agenda here?
Right, which would be the, the, currently the $10 fee, and then the 10%, that's what we currently charge. So that would be the, the single item on the fee schedule.
But, but it would include discussion of the item that you talked about, the egg plastics, and that's, I think is an important part of it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with a question.
Mr. Natch.
Will, will that give you enough time, too, to, you know, in a discussion with the fluorescent light bulb, some of these other program costs and stuff like that?
I've asked, I've asked staff to start putting together a strategy towards putting that together. We do look at doing that in 2019. I don't know if I will have cost estimates, I'm wondering what it would take to do it by, by December 18th, but in 2019, we do plan to implement a collection for that.
Mr. Chair, we also do have, Commissioner Natch, we do have funds that are there and available for that program, as well as for egg plastics, so those dollars could be utilized, and when we have specific program information, we would bring it back to you, so that if we know there's a specific expenditure, that would come back to you, so that it, you're clear about use of those funds.
Mr. Natch, or Commissioner Merrick?
So we, we hold a public hearing on December 18th, do we have to make a decision at, at that time, or if we don't have all of the information, can it be continued?
The decision would be to either leave the environmental service fee at the $10 or some other number, regardless, you, you, of the, having that information, you can choose to go up or down with that.
So we have to make a decision on that issue at, at that meeting?
You'll need to make a decision. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Point it is, you know, because we're doing the assessment, we need to have it by that date, but next year, you could adjust it again, so.
Correct.
It's not, you know, forever decision here, so.
Okay. But we don't have the option for, for continuation of, of the public hearing at that time to get more information?
Um, I think you're going to need to set that before the end of December, so that would really be.
For 2019.
Other than that, you'd have to look at what you want to do in 2020.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other discussion? So it's been moved and seconded, a public hearing December 18th, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
And I don't have any miscellaneous items unless you have anything for me.
Anyone? Thank you.
Okay.
That brings us up to issues by commissioners, and I think I'm going to start here. We do have one important announcement, and I want to thank Dr. Williams for putting this little narrative together. Sterns County Board of Commissioners is proud to have our fellow Commissioner, Duane F. Merrick, as AMC's 2018 Outstanding Service Award winner. Were you aware of this, Duane? Commissioner Merrick's dedication, leadership, and vision exemplify the meaning of a true public servant. Elected to office during a March 2006 special election, Commissioner Merrick came to the board with well over two decades of local government experience. Previously, he served on the St. Cloud Township Board and the St. Cloud City Council. His genuine concern for the county and its residents, and the satisfaction of being part of a team that can make a difference, is really what it's all about for Duane. During his 12-plus-year tenure on the Sterns County Board, Duane has promoted a philosophy of innovation throughout the organization that has fostered numerous efficiencies and streamlined services. In addition, intergovernmental cooperation is a practice Duane has strongly promoted while holding public office. Duane's leadership and passion for better intergovernmental relations was reflected in his roles in AMC leadership positions, his regular participation in AMC and NAKO, and his ever-present voice at local township officers and municipal league meetings. Duane believes that communication and collaboration are vital to government success, and demonstrates that commitment. With the county's leadership teams, staff line residents, or in the community with neighborhoods, church members or families, Duane has been known to say it's not possible to over-communicate. Commissioner Merrick's underlying philosophy to always be respectful, respectful of others is a hallmark of his service and a legacy. Respect is defined as appreciating and valuating, and valuing someone as a result of their abilities, qualities, and achievements. So it is with high regard that we nominated Duane for AMC's 2018 Outstanding Service Award, and we are very pleased that he will receive the award at this year's AMC conference. Congratulations, Duane. We are, issues by commissioners, Duane?
That's very humbling and kind of embarrassing, really.
It was meant to be.
You know, you don't, you don't do anything, I mean, it takes teamwork, I mean, it's our board, your family support, staff, you know, people in the community, and you just, there's no I in the word team, and so it's just, thank you, I guess, it's just very humbling. Thank you.
Mr. Persky?
I just want to offer my congratulations from the board.
Thank you. Mr. Natch?
Uh, just one note, uh, the Sterns County 4-H Recognition Banquet will be held December 27th, and that will be at St. Mary's, St. Mary Help of Christians Church in St. Augusta, and it'll be from 7:00 PM, the social hour, 7:30, they're having a banquet and a chicken meal, so everyone's invited.
Mr. Lindware?
Yeah, uh, usually, I'm the wise-ass funny guy, but I just wanted to note the passing of my predecessor, Keith Mauer, and his wake and his funeral will be Friday at St. Mary's Help of Christians in, in St. Augusta. He only gave me one piece of advice, you know, when I ran the first time, and the point that he made, well, he made two points. The first point was, yes, you're elected by district, but you represent the entire county, and the second thing he told me was to lose some weight.
Randy, did you have anything? Dr. Williams?
Yeah, I hear plenty from Randy, Randy, not a few minutes.
Nothing else? This meeting is adjourned, we're going to be taking a break until we're going to have the truth in taxation meeting. meeting. It's six o'clock. We're going to call the truth in budgeting meeting to order. We are holding this truth in budgeting meeting as required by the state to allow the public to understand and participate in the county budget process. The meeting tonight is only for informational purposes. No decisions will be made and no action will be taken tonight to set a 2019 county budget or a county levy. We will have the county administrator present an overview of our proposed budget and levy for 2019. We will then hear from the county auditor treasurer about how this proposed levy impacts our local property taxes. Following the presentations, we will open the floor to receive testimony from the public. Members of the public who are not in attendance tonight can still participate by sending their comments to administration and the county board until December 11th of 2018, when the board is scheduled to set its final levy for 2019. To provide comments or feedback, send an email to budget@county@co.stearns.mn.us or phone 320-656-3601. Or by mail at Stearns County Administration, County Administration Center, Room 121, 705 Courthouse Square, St. Cloud, Minnesota 56303. With that, Dr. Williams, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First of all, I just want to thank the people sitting on my right and left here. This makes up our budget committee, Steve, Randy, and Sarah, and then everybody behind me, department directors. Thank them as well for all their work on this annual budget and everybody else in the county that has a hand in working on the budget. It certainly does take a team to pull this together, so thanks to everybody that's a part of this process. As a note, the booklet that you have and that was made available for the public here has most of the slides that you're going to see tonight. And then at the back end of that booklet is a more detailed spreadsheet type of presentation of the entire budget. As Chair Mergens suggested, we're here to talk about the budget and levy. And I'll just take a quick minute to remind you of some of the work we did on performance measures that we started this year during our budget process. And then, of course, we'll talk about the budget and the levy. And so, as the slide says here, we're here to provide the information to the board and the public. And just for the board's understanding, this is the same budget that we've been discussing since September. It is the same numbers that you saw as you set the preliminary levy. And, of course, this is a result of our close review of the entire budget, including all funds, all revenues, and all expenditures. And we do all this, as you can see on the slide, to fulfill our mission, to support our values, and to carry out the many mandates that we're required to carry out on behalf of the federal and state government. So, very quickly, just want to touch on performance measurements. As you know, we joined the state's performance measurement program last year, and we get a little bit of money for joining that. But we also get compared to all the other jurisdictions that submit information on those same measurements, so it's a good comparison for us. And then we took that quite a bit further. We have established our own set of measures so that we could track those measures over time. So, the idea really is to create a discussion during budget time about what's really important for each department. And the next slide shows just a few of the examples. We have many more. As you remember, we gave quite a lengthy report to the board earlier this year. And so, at the beginning of the process next year, we'll update all that information, and we'll provide a report on all those measures before we get into the dollars and cents of the budget next year, just like we did this year. And so, the real purpose of tonight is to talk about the budget and the levy. And before we get too far into that, I want to talk about some of the things that we really wanted to accomplish this year and with the budget moving forward. And, of course, we want to create a budget for you that keeps the property tax, the use of the property tax, to as minimal as possible. We also have, as you know, this is really the first full year that we've implemented the quarter percent sales tax for transportation, and you'll see that that has helped us dramatically And you'll see that that has helped us dramatically in our annual road construction plan. You also know that we're working on an initiative to improve broadband in the county, and so we're just about, in fact, we'll be evaluating proposals next week with our task force and hopefully bringing to the county board a recommendation of which consulting firm to choose to do the feasibility study to improve broadband out in the Bruton, Belgrade, Elrosa Of course, as I said, we need to fund our mandated programs, and you'll see in the budget here some additional costs, especially in the area of child protection. We also review all of our, not all of our fees, we review a third of the fees every year, so on a rotating basis, we look at all the county's fees every three years. And you acted on those changes earlier in this year. And then, of course, we have the service center expansion under construction now. I think we have that pretty much enclosed now, so we'll really start to see that addition of the building come together. And as you all know, that's to make those services more accessible to our public and provide really needed space that we have for our own staff and for our own efficiencies. We have a number of other initiatives in this budget. As you know, we are underway with a study of the recorder and some of the auditor treasurer functions licensing and elections. That's in process now, should be completed by the first quarter in 2019. You'll see that we set aside some money, assuming there will be some recommendations coming from that staffing and best practices study. You'll see that the results of the staffing and best practices study of the county attorney's office, we'll see our second year of implementing those changes in this budget. And then, in our appropriations to outside agencies, you'll see that we're recommending to continue to reduce some of those appropriations to those entities that aren't providing either mandated or really core functions of the county. This year, as you know, we completed the first year of our triennial review. That, as you know, cost a little bit, and we budgeted for that in the 2019 budget, but really that staves off that huge one-time cost that could occur if we did a complete study, you know, and wait 10 years to do it, for example. We're also, all of our agreements with all of our bargaining units expire at the end of this year. We have been negotiating in earnest in the last month or so. I'm happy to say that we have tentative agreements with two-thirds of our employees, I would say, maybe even more than that. So we have, as of today, we had another tentative agreement. And so we're beginning to know what those costs are going to be, but, of course, those costs are within the 2019 budget as well. We have another initiative that I've been working on is to increase our intergovernmental cooperation locally with some of our local cities. And we have a focus group that's been meeting on that. And we actually have a session in a couple of weeks. I think where we're going to land on our first little trial effort is on training. And so we're going to be able to engage some of the smaller cities in a joint effort on training, really based on our pretty robust training program. And then, as we talked about today, on December 12th, we'll have a meeting with our legislators and talk about our priorities for the coming years. So those are some of the priorities you'll see in the numbers as you look ahead here. The budget process, we're towards the end. You can see the date of November 27th there, and that's today. That's the public hearing and the chance for the public to formally weigh in. As Commissioner Mergens suggested, the public can weigh in and make comments all the way up until the time that we propose to adopt the budget on December 11th. So, okay, let's talk a little bit about the numbers. In this budget, you will see a total expenditures of over $160 million, and that is about a 3, that is a 3.59% increase in expenditures. You'll see a decrease in our intergovernmental funds, down to the $51.5 million, and then that requiring a property tax levy of about $80 million, $80 million, $500,000, which is a 3.79% increase in the property tax levy. If you take another look at the revenue, the non-tax revenue, so this would include fees and the intergovernmental revenues. It's down, but you can see that the biggest number there is road construction, just because of how the road constructions are, road construction is funded in the 2019 budget. But all totaled, those non-tax revenues are indeed down about $400,000. This slide shows changes in non-levy funding, so this is how much these major areas have changed. And really, the place I want to point out here is the very first there is that we're using $3.8 million in fund balance. A million and a half of that is really a carryover of the sales tax for road construction. So while technically it's use of fund balance, I wouldn't be too concerned about that. But still, if we needed a levy for that additional $2.3 million, the little levy increase would actually be more like 6.7% or 6.8% rather than the 3.7% that's being proposed. So, and that you'll see, as we talk about it in future, there's a million and a half that is in the debt service fund, and we really planned that for a while. And then we have use of the project fund of about $900,000. The next graph, again talking about revenues, compares our intergovernmental revenue with the levy over time. And so you can see that over time, there has been more and more and more reliance upon the property tax and less reliance on intergovernmental revenues. So you can see that there's spikes there on an annual basis, depending on, you know, depending on intergovernmental funding, most likely those are some one-time or a heavy use of funds for road construction or something like that. But you can clearly see that the trend over time has been that we have less intergovernmental revenue in comparison to what our property tax burden is to fund our services and programs. So that's a trend that we don't really like to see, because most of what we do is mandated, a large portion of what we do is mandated, and it's programs and services that we not only must provide, but we also have to provide them to a certain standard or a certain level as mandated by usually the state government. So just a few of the highlights of some of the major changes, most of these being costs. The very first one there, we've talked about, if we don't get a legislative change, we're going to bear 100% of the costs of children placed in Rule 5 residential treatment. We estimate that to be $250,000. I know that'll be high on the list of AMC's priorities, and it's one of our priorities as well. But without that change, we know that cost will be at least that much. The next area is also in child protection, and we have, you'll see both a social worker and a case aid, an additional social worker and case aid budgeted in this budget. And you can see the, and we've talked about this in the past, the dramatic increase in reports of child maltreatment and the increase in the cost and use of out-of-home placements. So just on this slide alone, there's $550,000 of additional costs to our budget. The next slide, you'll see a couple of that I mentioned earlier. We have the second year of, three years of implementing, the recommendations of the best practices study done in the attorney's office. And there's $114,000 of cost in here for those two additional people. And then, as I suggested earlier, we have some funds set aside, assuming that we're going to have some recommendations come on the recommendations on the recorders and auditor's office study of $130,000. We noted in our earlier discussions that the jail has some significant increase in cost as well. And all those total, when you talk about overtime and the transport and the board of prisoners, that's, in this budget, is an increase of $315,000. And then we have additional staff person in community corrections, that's about, that is $80,000. And so this slide has about $639,000 in it. So if you just add up those two slides of additional costs, there's $1.2 million in costs that have been added to the budget from 2018 to 2019, some of the major drivers of the budget. This shows the budget by fund, and you can see the 3.59% increase in spending broken out here. And, of course, you can see that the general fund, the human services fund, and the road and bridge fund, and if you add in road construction, that's all 93% of the budget. And you can see that each one of those major funds, operating funds, is growing right at about the rate that the entire budget is growing. So really, those three funds carry the weight. And the next slide just illustrates that in a different fashion. And you can see that those three funds drive the bulk of the budget and the bulk of the increase. We also look at the budget in four categories when we look at it as total, and it shouldn't be any surprise to anybody that personnel makes up the bulk of the costs and therefore makes up the bulk of the increase. In this number, of course, we have general pay adjustments, even though we didn't know exactly what they would be. But as I said, we are settling those contracts. And on the next slide, you'll see that we have some additional people that we've already talked about that enter into that number as well. The supplies are down a little bit in capital outlay. I'll show you that, broken down a little bit in a couple more slides, but basically that, there's an increase in technology, again of $200,000, and then the use of the project fund, about $900,000. So the personnel request, and we've touched on this, so there's six new full-time equivalents in the budget, and one in HR, two in the attorney, three in human services. So we talked about those extensively. I could go into more detail about those, but I think we've probably spent enough time discussing those in the past. So I'll just show you those, and you can see how they add up. The capital outlay spending, as I said, will continue to increase our investment in technology, both for efficiencies and better services to the public. So you can see we've been adding a couple hundred thousand dollars into that part of the budget for the last couple of years. As usual, there's a turnover of squad cars, highway equipment, and parks equipment. And then, as I said, we have the use of the project fund, which is broken out on the next slide. You can see that the bulk of that is on the 911 system upgrade. Now, the project fund has, and the sonar, which is, the sheriff's department is doing fundraising, that's for the water search and rescue equipment. And then the box truck, which I think is...
Facilities.
Facilities, yeah, facilities department. So that use of the fund there is $878,000. That fund today is at $5.5 million. So if allowed in this budget, the fund will drop to $4.6 million if we make these expenditures. So there is ample amount in that fund to handle that. We talked a little bit about road construction, and you can see that here that road construction in 2019 will be another large construction year. And you can see that there's $7.6 million in sales tax budgeted to bolster the road construction for the year. And so we're really beginning now to see the positive impact of that quarter percent sales tax. I think if I added the construction upright, there's over 63 miles of resurfacing to be done in 2019, and I would suggest to you that much of that wouldn't be able to happen if we didn't have that quarter percent sales tax. And the quarter percent sales tax is trending to be significantly higher than we originally estimated, so that's also a good thing. Lastly, just by way of detail, here's the contributions to outside agencies. And you can see that in this budget, we'll continue to reduce appropriations to those entities that aren't provided mandating mandated service or core services. So you can see there that there's a reduction to the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, to the St. Cloud Downtown Council, to the St. Cloud Area CBB, and to the Tribe County Humane Society. There's also less, not really due to our work, but due to those other outside agencies, there's less going to the radio board and less going to the library. So that's kind of the budget, you know, a little bit of detail for you, just as a reminder, there's over $160 million in expenditures. There's over $80 million in a tax levy. And the tax rate, as Randy will go through, is actually going to go down because our property tax base is going up. So Randy's going to take it from here and talk more about the tax levy and its implications on properties.
Commissioner Barrick has a question.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Williams. The Central Minnesota Council on Aging, that's coming out of another budget, is that right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, that is being, we actually entered into a contract with them through the Human Services Fund. So if you remember, a couple of years ago, and we reduced a number of agencies that were funded through the Human Services Fund, that's the only one that we ended up refunding through a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, this first slide talks about the levy expenses by fund. So this is different than total expenditures. This is just the revenues and non-tax revenues minus the expenses. So this is a levy effect from each fund. As you can see, the general fund has an increase of 4.7%, and that's mainly, as Mike talked about, personnel and some technology. This is the breakdown of the distribution of the levy by fund. So as we've kind of seen, the general fund is the biggest, and that holds all the departments except for the other ones separately listed. So the sheriff, the attorney, environmental services, et cetera, like that. And then human services is 37%, road and bridge is 9%, and so on from there. As Mike talked about, our tax rate has gone down this year, and it continues to go down. Even before this, back in 2013, it was 55.7%. So we're seeing the tax rate go down, and that's indication that the tax base is growing faster than our levy is. So this is a comparison of various counties. The MICA counties, that's the Minnesota Intergovernment Association that we're a member of. Those are light counties that we relate to, so their average is 4.7%. Our comparison counties, that's what we use to look at our pay rates, the average is just over 6%. The neighboring counties is at 4.84%. And as Mike mentioned, the Stearns County is at 3.79%. This next one, this is the statewide, where the counties are at. State rate average increase is 5%. And then the columns here on the left side is a breakdown by levy size, and on the right side is the breakdown by population of the levy increase. So we would be in that bottom category, over 60 million levy and over 100,000 population. As you can see, their levy increases are a little bit more than ours. This is the property tax levy cost per capita. So there's 87 counties in the state. Being the first would be the highest cost per capita, and 87 would be the lowest cost. So being 77, you know, we're within 10 counties of being the lowest cost per capita. So that looks like a pretty healthy number, and as you're seeing, it is dropping, or excuse me, our cost compared to other ones are getting better. The 2019 is the proposed number out there. And I think this slide and the previous slides demonstrate that, you know, the state has done a number of cost shifts, and there's been more mandates. The county has seemed to be able to handle these changes a little more economically than other counties have. So this is the tax base that we've talked some about. Our new construction is $179 million. Last year, that was $183 million, so that's very healthy. You can remember, even a few years ago, we normally were in the $120 million range, so this is very good growth. Utility properties have gone up over $3.5 million, and we had three TIF districts decertify. So the total tax base of new tax base is $192 million. That's a very healthy amount. The second from the bottom line talks about the county taxes from these sources, would be just over $1.2 million. And our proposed levy increase is $2.9 million. So that's 41% of our increase would be paid for by the new sources. This is what we're seeing in Stearns County for all the jurisdictions within the county. We have 30 cities, and they're going up an average of 6.84%. The townships are going up, the average of 2.58%. Just of note, the special taxing district, the main increase there is in metro transit has gone up significantly. And then you'll see tax increment financing is a pretty big jump. So we have five new TIF districts, and you would expect this number to increase, and you want this number to increase. That means that the development that they're planning is happening, so that's a healthy number. So the net tax countywide is going up 3.73%. So this slide's a little confusing, I know, but... So this slide's a little confusing, I know, but this is to demonstrate what the change in your tax rate does. So this assumes a 3.79% levy increase, but no change in market value. So if that, if you did not have a change in market value, you should see a 2.27% decrease in your taxes. So that's not what we're expecting people are going to see on average, but this is to, just to demonstrate what the change in tax rate can do. Well, this next slide is more of the average, what we expect to see. These are the major property types that we have, and again, this is county tax only. This is with our levy increase, and then the average market increase in each property tax. Residential homestead, I'll explain a little bit more in the next slide, but agricultural homestead saw really no change, unless they'll see a change, a reduction in their, their county taxes. Commercial industrial saw a 3.7% average market value increase, and they'll see about a 1.7, 1.8% increase in their county tax. Seasonal rec saw about a 4.3% increase on average, and they'll see about a 1.97 or close to 2% increase in their county tax, so. And the residential homestead has an additional impact as their value goes up. So that's what I'm demonstrating in this, is the first one column talks about, the red column is the reduction because of the tax rate change. The next column over is their increase because their market value went up. And then the next one over there, the county tax date, due to the loss of the homestead exclusion. So as residential properties go up, their market value, they lose homestead exclusion. They get the max of $30,000 at, at $76,000 of market value. So then that $30,000 continues to go down as you move up, and it gets to zero at $413,000. So as their market value goes up, not only are they paying tax on that higher market value, but they're losing that exclusion, too. So it's kind of a double hit for a, a homestead property. And then just, I think, some final summary numbers here. The budget is going up 3.59%, the levy, as we've talked about, going up 3.79% proposed, talked about the market value changes, and then the tax rate's going down 2.27%, so. Without it, there's any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
I, I think it's important to emphasize all of these numbers you're talking about, for the most part, are on the county tax. We, we need, I think we need to emphasize that over and over, because some folks will look at their tax bill and say, well, that's not what they said. So we have a city, we have a county, we have schools, we got taxing districts, and I just wanted to emphasize that.
Yeah, you're correct, Dwayne. The calls we get, we have to explain to them is, you know, we can answer the county tax line.
Right, right.
And certainly, we can, you know, the assessor's office handles values, but
Right.
the rest of the jurisdictions are responsible for their levy.
And then when you throw all of that into the mix, I was talking to somebody earlier today, the formula for doing all of that is set by the legislature. So there's, there's another arm out there, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation. If you want to open the public hearing.
Okay, this point. We would open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the taxing issue? Anyone wishing to speak? Third call, anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. And then do we need to adjourn? Are we ready for adjournment? Is there anything else?
We're just going to suggest you might remind people that we do intend to bring the budget to, to set the levy on your, for your December 11th meeting.
Okay, the budget and levy will be set on December 11th meeting. That's a 9:00 AM meeting.
And all of this information is on the website.
Everything that you presented here on the website?
Yes, and, and I'm sure up on the screen, we'll see how we can be contacted again if people have comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Persky.
In 2009, I was on the council in Sartell, and we had, in 2009 and in 2010, the census. Will we have any added costs then in the budget in 2020 with the census coming in then?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, I'm not sure that we will have additional expenditures to speak of. I know, you know, we will be involved in helping to organize the census and be part of a committee and that kind of thing, but I'm not sure that we would have any...
Do we bring any additional personnel on?
Um, no, and I, and Mike's correct, is, we certainly will do some coordination and helping, but the actual redistricting will happen after that, after 2020, and we'll have a little bit of costs then. But the census, unless, you know, we decide to get more involved, there really is not a lot of costs there.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.